Hi, I'm Donna Rodriguez. I'm the Director of Creative Media Services for PAC TV. I want to thank our candidates for participating in this forum and bringing informational programming to residents and voters this election season. I'm joined tonight by Brian Sullivan, our Senior Producer for PAC TV. We'll be acting as the moderators for this forum. Let me take a moment to explain the format. Our four candidates who are running for Board of Selectmen in the town of Pembroke, Ben Bastianelli, Michelle Burt, John Brown, and Daniel Trubuco will be participating in this forum tonight. Each candidate will be introduced in alphabetical order. They'll have two minutes to introduce themselves, speak about who they are and why they're running for this office, as well as describing their qualifications for the position.
The candidates will then be asked a series of questions relating to local issues. We'll rotate the order in which each candidate answers the questions presented to ensure fair and equal opportunities. PAC TV created a survey on its website for Pembroke residents to submit questions for the candidates, which was promoted through local media, the town website, and community businesses. The goal was simply to solicit feedback about what are the most important issues facing the town at this time, and then direct the questions to the candidates. Responses were tallied, and the most often stated questions and/or topics were selected for tonight's forum. The participants in tonight's forum have not been informed of the questions or topics in advance.
Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. At the end of the forum, each candidate will also have the opportunity to give closing remarks. Candidates can choose the topics and the points they would like to make for these remarks. Closing remarks will also be held to a two-minute response. This will not be a debate. It's an opportunity for the candidates to let voters know who they are and where they stand on certain issues. Thank you. Ready to begin? All right, we are going to start off by giving each of you two minutes to introduce yourself and talk about your candidacy. We're going to go alphabetically, and we're going to start with Mr. Bastianelli.
Good evening. Ben Bastianelli. As a candidate, I want to bring my skill set to the board, enhance its ability to function, guide its understanding of our town policies and procedures, and not institute any already failed policies like Town Manager. When a political body looks to change its current system, it's time to look at the body itself. If the town budget overwhelms five elected officials, then it's time to replace them with people who are willing to take on the challenge. Times change and needs change. That's what this election is about. Change the people, not the system. We have an acting Town Manager, and it doesn't work. I'm not willing to lose the checks and balances of the established boards for a Town Manager structure that replaces all this responsibility in six people. We need commercial development with open-minded approach. Offering private sector businesses payments in lieu of taxes is what is known as a shakedown in the private world. Either give them a concession or don't. That's why we struggle. We're stagnant in our understanding and our policies. We fail to see our infrastructure needs. We fail to guide those who push their agendas. We end up with wildly unfundable results, and then we try to establish funding sources. We have bylaws. We have a system we need to use. It worked for many years until it was abandoned. Make a positive change. It starts at the ballot box. Send some new thinking to the board. Now's the time. It can't hurt what we have isn't working.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bastianelli. And moving on, we're going to go to John Brown. You have two moments, two minutes, excuse me.
Thank you. Hello, my name is John Brown, candidate for Pembroke Selectmen. To tell you a bit about myself, my family and I came up from Washington DC, where I worked for a congressional member and a nonprofit for 12 years. When my wife had the opportunity to come home to Massachusetts, we took it and moved here to Pembroke, where I've been quite active in the community with groups and boards such as North Pembroke School Council, and for the past three years, a member of the Pembroke Board of Advisory. These experiences here in Pembroke and the 12 years in DC have taught me a lot of what has to be done to help others here in our town. The reason I'm running for the Board of Selectmen is because I want to interject different perspective to the board by looking for resources and solutions for our town's many upcoming issues. My top priorities are aggressively pursuing grant money on the state and federal level. Pembroke actually signed the Community Compact on February 1st, would make us the 329th town in the Commonwealth to sign. To help grow small business in Pembroke by working with the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce, and also reaching out to businesses such as Belk, CoreScope, Takita Pharmaceutical, a few examples I have, to see if they're willing to invest in our town. To have an active dialogue with the corporate businesses in town, so we can find solutions for the corporate entities to help out our community. To find out the best solutions with my colleagues on the board if I'm able to be elected, for the unfunded mandates of health insurance, and also retirement benefits. And to continue the process of going from a town administrator to a town manager. There are many other issues to be discussed which are very important to the financial future and the well-being of the town of Pembroke. I look forward to giving my point of view about them with my opponents this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And we are moving on to Michelle Burt. You have two minutes.
Thank you to PAC TV for having us here this evening. I want to take this opportunity to tell you a little bit about myself. My name's Michelle Burt. I live in Pembroke with my husband Rich and our two kids Courtney and Kyle. I actually live in the house that I grew up in, which we purchased from my parents in 1991. I am a third-generation resident with a long and proud history of community involvement that dates back to my childhood. I have both a business and a legal background. I worked as a paralegal in a law firm before I entered the business world in 1994. My business, legal, and community background both qualify me for this position and differentiate me from my opponents. I was raised in a blue-collar family. I am a hard-working, self-employed businesswoman. I am neither a Democrat or a Republican. As an independent, a member of the Pembroke Chamber of Commerce, a former selectman, a former Housing Authority Commissioner, I believe I represent the entire community, and I request your vote on May 12.
Thank you very much, Michelle. And now, moving on, Daniel Trubuco.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you PAC TV for hosting this Candidates Forum. My name is Dan Trubuco, and I'm running for reelection as a member of the town of Pembroke Board of Selectmen. There are two seats available, and I respectfully ask for one of your votes. Why should someone vote for me? I would invite the people of Pembroke to look at my passion and commitment toward the duties as a selectman, not just what occurs during Board of Selectmen's meetings, but outside of Town Hall as well, by my working on various boards, subcommittees, and speaking with citizens who have issues that need to be addressed. Make a conscious effort to look at all sides of an issue and contemplate what is best for the town as a whole when making a decision. On account of this thought process, people have told me that they like the way I speak when talking about complicated or controversial issues, since I inform the public on the background and help to provide them with insight on the issue to the greatest extent possible. I try to make thinking rationally on how to achieve a balance at all matters that come before the Board of Selectmen my hallmark. Experiencing municipal government and knowing how it works in Pembroke are important factors when choosing a selectman. I've been a selectman for nine years, and previously an elected planning board member for seven years, and have served on various town committees and councils. This job of selectman is much more than one meeting on Monday evenings. The work itself and contributing to the community is enjoyable. I like my job, and I'm told that I'm good at it. I would ask you to consider casting your vote for me on May 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. And now, we'll turn it over to Brian to ask question number one for the forum.
Thank you, Donna. People who choose to run for the Board of Selectmen are willing to take on a huge commitment in time and energy to serve their town and its residents. Candidates typically have a keen interest in how their town operates and are intimately aware of their town's strengths and needs. This question has two parts. We'll start with the first one, which is, what do you see as Pembroke's biggest needs or challenges today? And the second is, how are you uniquely able to assist in tackling these needs or challenges? And we'll start with John Brown.
Okay. Thank you. Biggest needs for the town of Pembroke is asking for our fair share. It's unfortunate that basically when we do ask for certain things, we get pennies on the pennies, not pennies on the dollar. And that concerns me because we should be asking for more. And now, since we're part of the Community Compact, which is wonderful, we're able to actually ask for more. The $50,000 that we spent on, for a survey for the fire and police, we could have gotten that through the Community Compact if we actually did it when the Community Compact came out in 2015 instead of 2018. So, we're part of it now. We could be able to ask for more, get more, be more informed, to get our fair share on the state and federal level.
And the second question is, how are you uniquely qualified to assist in tackling these needs or challenges?
Well, when I work in Washington DC for my congressional member, it's all about constituent services. It's about the customer. How can we help you? Are we asking the right questions to whomever actually has the information for us? When I'm able to talk to whomever it may be, or call someone up and say, "I don't have this information. I'm not informed on it." Can you actually, can we actually give you the answer that we need to help us out? So, that's where I'm qualified for this job. It's pretty much, I don't know when to actually shut up at times. So, I'd rather want to get the answer instead of sitting back in the background and say, "No, we're good."
All right. Our next person we're questioning is Michelle. If you need us to ask the question again, I can repeat the question.
Sure, yeah. If you could repeat, that'd be great.
All right. So, we'll start off right from Jump Street here. People who choose to run for the Board of Selectmen are willing to take on a huge commitment in time and energy to serve their town and its residents. Candidates typically have a keen interest in how their town operates, and they're intimately aware of the town's strengths and needs. So, the first part of the question is, what do you see as Pembroke's biggest needs or challenges today? And the second part is, how are you uniquely qualified to assist in tackling these needs or challenges?
I think the biggest need right now is public safety. And I think that's probably one of the residents' top priorities, is public safety, especially in light of the recent situation we had on Furnace Lane, where we only had one firefighter responding to a fire who was there alone for 12 minutes before backup came. And public safety as well, with the police, the same situation. For two-thirds of the day, we've got three cars on the road. And it was the same situation in 1984. Well, since 1984, the town has almost doubled in size. So, I'm hoping that the voters are all in favor of an override when they go to the polls, and that will alleviate that problem. If not, I would say I'm uniquely qualified to solve the problem, because I was a former selectman, and I do have a relationship with the department heads.
All right. And we'll move on to Daniel Trubuco. Same question. I can repeat the question for you as well.
Sure thing, I think I got it.
Okay.
So, the biggest need for the town of Pembroke, there's no single largest need. There are many needs in Pembroke, but I'll focus on one. Reformulating how town government works. The town of Pembroke is 300 years old now, and we're still working on the 300-year-old system of governance. So, we need to make changes to modernize the government. And the biggest change that's actually on the town meeting warrant this year is to change from a town administrative form of government to a Town Manager form of government. Many people ask me, "Why can't the town run more like a business?" So, municipal government and businesses are separate and apart, but there is a way to get close to it, to approximate running like a business, and that's a Town Manager, to have a CEO run the town and be, run the day-to-day operations among all the directors and all the Town Hall personnel. The system that's in place now are part-time elected boards are responsible for running directors and departments. So, elected boards, part-time, running a department is not an efficient way to run a town government. It's not an efficient way to run a business. So, how can we make Pembroke more like a business? Town Manager. Second part of the question is, how am I qualified to perform this? Well, when I was last chairman of the Board of Selectmen three years ago, I implemented a new town government study committee that I've been on for the last three years, studying just this case. So, this Town Manager article that's going to be on Town Meeting floor is not here in a whim. There were two previous government study committees that researched it. Each one failed to pass Town Manager. The town wasn't ready at that time. It's 2018. The town is ready. The town has grown more.
And your time is up.
Thank you.
And we'll close this out with Ben Bastianelli. Same question for you. If you need me to repeat it, I can.
I think the single biggest challenge at this point in time for the town is to look very closely at this Town Manager article. We have a town that's been functioning for over 300 years, and it functions by a set of bylaws and by a system. And for the last eight years, we've abandoned that bylaw. We've abandoned that system. We've abandoned those boards. We don't allow the boards to function the way they're supposed to function. The boards do not oversee the directors. The boards are there to protect the people and oversee the expenditures and the monies and the budgets that are allocated to the directors. The directors run their own show. They run the day-to-day operation. But the boards sit on a weekly basis, or a bi-weekly basis, or every, once a month, to review those expenditures and to see where that money's spent. In particular, the DPW has been instrumental in the roadway projects in the town. It was the DPW directors that put together the funds out of Chapter 90 money to do the designs and to get the thing to the old colony so that the roadway could be improved. We're doing the same thing with Route 36. How do I bring a skill set to the town? I am a businessman. I own a company, a multimillion-dollar company, and I've run my operation for 35 years. I understand numbers. I understand economies of scale. I understand a happy balance between making something happen and not even venturing into it if it's not set up properly from the very beginning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll move on to our second question with Donna.
Thank you, Brian. The condition and the future of the Pembroke Community Center has been a controversial issue for a number of years. Studies have been conducted, and task forces have been formed. Many people have been involved, and it's been a cost, it's actually cost a fair amount of money, yet many argue that nothing meaningful has been done to date to bring about significant change. Our question is really quite simple. What is your vision for the community center? And we're going to be starting with Michelle.
Thank you. Actually, Dan and I sit on the Community Center Task Force Committee. And I think the vision for the center is a combination of retail space, town offices, with housing to the rear. And I know that a lot of studies have been done in the past, but it just hasn't been a right fit for the town. And I think in the past, maybe there's just been too many cooks in the kitchen trying to decide what needs to get done. It's going to be an expensive endeavor. I don't think we're ready for it yet now, but we're working on it to try and get something that we can put forth to the voters, hopefully, next year.
Thank you, Michelle. And Dan, what is your vision for the community center?
Well, the community center is, right now, it's this white elephant in the middle of town, and it could be such, so much more. The Community Center Task Force that I sit on, along with Michelle and some others in town, has a wonderful vision for the community center. The existing building now, it needs to be torn down. It's beyond its useful life. But the new, the new center that's already been envisioned, there's a site plan for it that's, that's been posted in public meetings, is community-related, some, some businesses intertwined with community-related spaces. The community center has never been rebuilt because of lack of money. So, this committee is, one of the biggest focuses of this committee is to find out how we can work with a developer to come in and keep the costs down to a minimum. And the greatest innovation of thought for this new committee is to add a housing element. A housing element to the back, where there's now a field, will allow a developer to be able to have a public-private partnership with the developer, so that the housing element can allow the developer to, to make money for himself in order for the town to save money for the commercial property out front. So, that's an innovative idea that we've been working on just in this committee that I think will work. And not only to save money to help us build a bigger building in front, but it could also be a town-friendly 40B so that our senior citizens can move out of their houses and still live in town, and be right in the center, within walking distance of the center of town. That's our vision.
Thank you. And moving on to Ben, what is your vision for the community center?
Well, my vision for the community center and for other structures in town that are in need of repair is to look at a plan where it can be implemented in sections, in segments. We have a tendency in town to look at something and want the Taj Mahal and spend exorbitant amounts of money for which we don't have. And then, in the end, we come up with a plan, it gets presented, and the plan ends up in a situation that we don't have any money for that, and it sits on the side, and we form another committee, and we go on and do it again. So, what I'd like to see happen with the community center is, there's a master plan. Take that master plan, break it into pieces, pursue small pieces of it, and begin to develop it and build it. If it's, if it's a private sector developer, we should be pursuing them now. We shouldn't be sitting there saying, "Okay, we have this master plan. Now, we'll, we'll form another committee and see what we're going to do about it." We should implement. We should move forward. We don't have the discipline that we need. When the time comes, you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And John, we'll be finishing up with you for this question. What is your vision for the community center?
Well, I've heard a lot about the community center throughout the years, especially some folks who were on regional committees about 20 years ago. And the way I look at the community center and talking to some folks that have on this recent board, looking for just the combination of possibly offices, council of aging, but also still making it a rec center, you know, and possibly having, you know, people coming from outside of the town, you know, paying a fee to come on in. So, we actually offset some costs that we're going to have to do between heating and you name it. But that would be my biggest thing of still making it a rec center, make sure it's, you know, aesthetic to the town, but also make sure it's affordable and it doesn't hurt the taxpayer at the same time.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're going to be moving over to Brian for question number three.
All right, thank you. The Board of Selectmen work closely with other departments within the town to manage the budget. There have been many instances of overrides in Pembroke, and this has clearly been a hot-button topic among residents who responded to our survey. When it comes to fiscal responsibility, what do you think is being done particularly well in town government, and where do you see a need for improvement? And we'll start things off with Daniel.
Sure. So, the town of Pembroke, since Proposition 2 and 1/2 went in, went in to effect in the early 80s, has only had one operational override. We've had several, we've had several net exclusions for specific projects, but we've only had one operational override in the entire history of the town of Pembroke. We do have one in the books, potentially coming up, will be proposed at Town Meeting this year for operational overrides to assist the police, fire department, and the DPW for our roads. So, the town of Pembroke has been fiscally responsible in that regard in not overstepping Prop 2 and 1/2. How can we work with other boards and committees? The real issue with Proposition 2 and 1/2 is that the costs have been going up at a rate that's higher than 2, than our ability to increase. So, the costs of the town have been going up, and we're at that intersection of the costs and the 2 and 1/2 rate right now. That's why we're in a budget bind that we are today. Proposition 2 and 1/2 was never meant, was never meant to never allow the town to go beyond 2 and 1/2. It gave you that relief valve, and that relief valve is an override. So, the town has been trying to work with all the departments to keep their budgets squeezed tight, to keep, keep costs down, to keep employment down, and we have done that. It doesn't seem it to some of the people in the public, but trust me, Pembroke is not run like Washington DC. It's a small community, and it's run, it's run well. So, I think we've been doing a good job. Can we do better? Yes, and we're trying to find ways to do that.
All right. We'll pose that same question to Ben Bastianelli. What do you think is being done particularly well in town government, and where do you see a need for improvement as far as fiscal responsibility is concerned?
I'm going to address the latter first. As far as fiscal responsibility is concerned, my vision of the problems that we have is a disciplinary vision. Back when Pembroke took on the school systems, just the fact that they took on the school systems and created their own system mandated that they change the way they handled their fiscal policies, and they didn't. A few years back, the state cut back on state aid to cities and towns. That mandated changes in the way they handled their responsibilities. They didn't. Those changes unfortunately may have meant cutbacks at those points in time. They didn't do it. Then came along municipal contracts. If we're at 2 and 1/2 percent and we're giving out 4 percent on contracts, obviously, you can't control a budget. It's discipline. And I know it's a fine line. I know it's difficult. I know that there's a balance between the municipal and the taxpayers. But what's happened is, we've failed to even make an effort, and that's the reason we've reached that crossover point. That's the reason we're spiraling out of control. What did they do well? I'll pass.
All right, so we'll pose that same question to John Brown. What do you think is being done particularly well by town government, and where do you see a need for improvement as far as fiscal responsibility is concerned?
Well, ever since I've been in town, the thing that we do well with is, we have to do a lot with the little, because, like I said, we're not asking enough to make sure that we are operating correctly. With the $63 million budget that's coming up, it concerns me that, you know, we're put to the brink of these small, I wouldn't say small, but these budgets that are, either we have to cut or we spend, either way, and then we have to worry about overrides on the town warrant and say, "Okay, well, we need this because the roads are in disrepair." You know, schools, they need a new roof, or whatever it may be. So, doing a lot with the little, I would actually say that is the best asset that Pembroke Town Government has right now. Now, what we can do to improve? We have to restructure the contracts in town. Because of basically how they're structured right now, it's not beneficial to the town. And if they keep on going up the way they are, even though that we are low on personnel of fire, police, DPW, the big three right there, we have to restructure them to make sure that we don't go into receivership down the road.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll close this question out with Michelle. I can ask it again if you'd like?
No, I'm good, thank you. I'm actually happy doing a lot with the little. The average home in Pembroke is compared to the town of Halifax. The town of Halifax, that house will cost you another $200 a month. And I think they do a lot with the little well. Ed Thorne meets regularly with the department heads to go over updates in their budget. I think Ed Thorne and the town accountant, Mike Buckley, work well together. We've continuously had a balanced budget. I know we had to borrow from free cash this year, but a lot of towns had to do the same. I believe we are currently fiscally responsible. One idea for improvement I have would be if we had a town planner, because then the town planner could research grants, and that would help with funds.
Thank you very much. And we will go to our fourth and final question with Donna.
Thank you, Brian. Pembroke is a town of 12,800 registered voters, yet only an average of 200 people attend town meeting. If you were elected to the Board of Selectmen, how would you engage the residents of Pembroke to ensure that they're, number one, informed about town government? And how would you work to increase residents' participation in town governance? And we're going to start with Ben for this question.
Could you repeat the first part of it?
Sure. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, how would you work to ensure that residents are equally informed about what you're doing, what's happening in all the boards and committees in town, and how the town's being run? And part two, how would you try to engage people to become more involved themselves?
I think that there are plenty of resources for the townspeople to be informed. The board meetings, the committee meetings, they're on, they're televised, the selectmen's meetings. The website for the town is very good. Everything is posted. There's things posted in Town Hall. There's social media. I think, I think as far as being informed, if, if they're I think, I think as far as being informed, if, if they're not informed, maybe they need to seek to be informed a little more because that end of it, that avenue is out there. It's just technology in, in the present times. In terms of engaging people to, to be more active, that's difficult. People are very busy. People have busy lives. It takes a lot for, and, and these people here understand as well as, as others that are involved. It takes a lot to get involved in town government. It's not just one meeting a week, or, or two meetings a month, or an hour here, or an hour there. I spend, I'm a DPW commissioner, and I spend a fair amount of my day, a couple of days a week, looking at and going over and, and, and taking care of DPW business, making phone calls, speaking to residents. I speak to the director every day. We talk about issues that residents have problems with, who, where, when, and how. So it's, it, people are busy, and if they have the time, it would be great. But it's a pretty difficult thing to create something to engage them more.
Okay, thank you very much. And moving on to you, John. If you were elected to the Board of Selectmen, how would you work to better inform residents about the work of town government? And number two, how would you work to engage them to become more involved themselves?
Well, the biggest thing is what we do right now. I mean, through the website, not a lot of people do go to the website. I've been talking to several residents that I was like, do you know about this going on? And they're like, no. I said, well, do you know about the website? Not really. And that's disconcerting, to inform them about what we have. Social media's been phenomenal. The town of Pembroke is on Facebook, and you name it with certain social media aspects of what they need. But kind of let them know that we're here, willing to talk to them, and, you know, I get psyched about this stuff because I've been in it for so long. So it's like, you know, for me going, hey, come on, you gotta come on out and you gotta check this stuff out, what Pembroke's doing, some people are not into that. You know, some people are more reserved. Now, as to try to get more people, like I said, to town meeting, or, you know, one example would be great. If one controversial issue would be the last thing on the ping-pong ball coming out, which did work for the marijuana question, not gonna lie. And a lot of people stayed, but usually when their issue is done, when they come to town meeting, they leave. And I would like, so I would hope that people be more engaged and say, there's more to do because it's these issues for fiscal responsibility, or what we're paying for, or what we're trying to do in the future are very important to us in town and also to their comfort, comfortability within town, too.
Okay, thank you very much. And Michelle, moving on to you. If you were elected to the Board of Selectmen, how would you work to ensure that residents are informed about town governance and also engage them to be more involved themselves?
I plan to inform them and engage them, and I'll give you three different ideas that I have. I do volunteer now, but I plan to volunteer more. I think getting out in the community with boots on the ground, shaking hands, meeting people, whether it's at the library, or a Boy Scouts event, or even the recent Easter egg hunt that the rec center put on. I mean, there was hundreds of people at that event. So that's one way I plan to engage in the community. The second one, it sounds like a silly idea, but I think it will work. I want to connect with the school department and have them send one student per week to come say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I feel as though that student will tell his parents, and his friends, and his grandparents to watch the selectmen's meeting, and it will just create more discussion, and maybe they'll see something at the selectmen's meeting on TV that their, speaks to their heart, or they want to get involved in. And then my third idea is office hours. I want to, much like the state rep does, I want to have office hours where I'm available for someone to just walk in and ask a question. A lot of us work full-time, so it's hard to get us on the phone. But I think if I had a set time every month that people could just walk into town hall, let's say maybe an hour before the start of the selectmen's meeting, and shoot the breeze with what their problem is, that's how I plan to engage in the community.
Thank you. And Dan, our final respondent to this question. If you are re-elected to the Board of Selectmen, how would you work to continue to inform residents about the working of town government, and how would you engage them to get more involved in town government or governance?
Sure. Like, like these other folks have already mentioned, the town of Pembroke has a lively website for a town, basically run by Deb Wall, our library director, so she does a wonderful job with that. We have a social media account. We get the word out. Our, our meetings are publicized and televised. The Board of Selectmen's are, and several of their meetings in town hall are televised. So the word is out there, but I don't think that the residents are disengaged from government. I, I think one of the best things about Pembroke as a community is that people are engaged. They're engaged in other things than government. They're engaged in, in coaching, teaching, scouts, bringing their children to, to the sports games. So people may not be completely engaged in town governance, but they're engaged in the community, and that's what's great about Pembroke.
Thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to Brian for final comments.
All right, so this is your chance to really plead your case. So this is, you've got two minutes to give your final remarks on why people should vote for you, so feel free to look at your cameras and talk to the people at home, tell them why they should vote for you and what's so special. And we will start with John Brown.
Thank you. I want to thank PAC TV and my opponents for the opportunity to discuss the issues that affect our town. Pembroke's a great town to live and raise a family, and I'm happy my family and I were able to move into town that has been very warm and welcoming and given me a sense of community I've been looking for for years. I want to use my knowledge and experience in government to help our town grow and prosper by asking for more from Beacon Hill and Capitol Hill, so we can get products started and accomplished in a timely manner, obtaining grant money so we can spend free cash in requests, not necessities, and letting people know that Pembroke is not a blip on the radar going to Hanover or Marshfield. I want to be your selectman because I want to be greedy for the citizens of Pembroke, to be that squeaky wheel so we can get things done for our citizens. With your help, we will be able to accomplish many things now in years to come. So don't forget to vote for me, John Brown, on May 12th for your, as your next selectman for the town of Pembroke. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle Burton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you again to PAC TV for having us tonight. I want the residents of Pembroke to know that I want to be on the Board of Selectmen because I believe we need a citizen's voice on the board. As a wife, a mother, and a taxpayer, I relate to the voters' challenges and concerns. I can bring a balanced and needed perspective to policy decisions. I do not have any special allegiance to a political party or specific agenda. My votes and actions will be guided by what is best for Pembroke as a whole, and I request your vote on May 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Tribuco, make your case to the people at home.
Very good. My name is Dan, Dan Tribuco. I'm running for Board of Selectmen here in the town of Pembroke, and I do ask for your vote. And I could go on and tell you some of the reasons why I would make a good selectman for you, but I'd rather take the time to tell everyone why these folks would make a good selectman for the town as well. Ben Bastianelli is a member of the DPW. He, he works very hard at that. He engages in the community. He'd make a great selectman. John Brown is a member of the advisory board. He works very hard in his own right. He's a fiscal conservative. He'd make a good selectman. Michelle Burton, a member of the community her entire life, former selectman, she would make a good selectman, too, for her experience. And one of the good things about having such qualified candidates that are running with me is that there are two votes. There are two seats up for election. I asked for one-year seats. And what could be a good thing for the voters is some, some folks want stability. They might get that if they vote for me, and some folks want change. Any one of these folks bring change automatically to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll round things out with Ben Bastianelli. Make your case to the voters at home.
Thank you. I will be the type of selectman who will represent your best interest and listen to you, and watch out for your financial needs and responsibilities. I firmly believe in the town. I believe that the people that are there do the best they can. I just think that times have changed, ideologies have changed, and we've just become stagnant. And I think that I can bring a new skill set, some new thoughts and ideas, and some creativity to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
We'd like to thank all of you for participating this evening in this forum, and we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of our forum, please visit our website, pacTV.org, for replay times and online video-on-demand viewing options. And please, make your choices heard by voting in the Pembroke Town Election on May 12th. For Brian, myself, the candidates, and all of us at PAC TV, thank you for taking the time to join us to learn more about your candidates.